All right, welcome everybody. I will go ahead and call to order this public meeting of the Missoula Board of County Commissioners, Thursday, June 13th, 2019, and we'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we have a public announcement.
Yes, in honor of Pride Month, I will read the following proclamation. Missoula County and the City of Missoula. Missoula County and the City of Missoula have diverse two-spirit lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer communities and are committed to supporting the visibility, dignity, and equality of all our community members. And while advancements have been made with respect to equitable treatment of two S L-G-B-T-Q plus persons throughout the nation, there continues to be discrimination and violence against people in this community, making it essential for local governments to collectively show support for community members who are affected. And whereas June is celebrated as two S L-G-B-T-Q plus Pride Month nationwide, and whereas everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, and hatred based on gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation. Therefore, be it resolved, Missoula County and the City of Missoula, dear hereby declare the month of June 19th as two S L-G-B-T-Q plus Pride Month, and urge all residents to respect and honor our diverse communities and celebrate and build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance.
Thank you. Are there any other public announcements? I guess I will announce, this is my last public meeting. I know how exciting and sad.
Wish we had a crowd.
I know, all the people here to celebrate. So I will be resigning my post as of effective July 1st, and this morning Commissioners Slotnick and Strohmeyer appointed Juanita Vero to fulfill the rest of my term. So she will be taking office on July 1st and will be replacing me. So, any other announcements?
I will just add on to that, thanks so much, Cola, for our TV audience who is out there somewhere watching. You've been a great contributor to the health and well-being of Missoula County for the past four and a half years. Thanks for your dedication and sacrifices, both you and that your family has made on behalf of Missoula County. You will be missed, and I think you will bring a great addition to Gallatin County, and I hope this will be an opportunity to maybe collaborate with cross-state and cross-county.
Yeah, I'm gonna add to that, then yes, there will be a new Commissioner, but there's no replacing you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on items not on today's agenda? All right, our current claims list includes claims received between May 30th to June 5th by the Commissioner's Office, and it totals $318,838.09. That's pretty low compared what we usually see. So if you're wondering why that is, you can go click on the claims list in our Agenda Portal and look at what claims total that amount. We only have one hearing today, and I will open it with a staff report for the Corey Brown family.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Lauren Miller, Planner with Community and Planning Services. This request today is from Corey Brown to utilize the family transfer exemption to create and transfer five tracts of land to his children and to his father. The tract is located just west of the Y between Highway 10 West and I-90. The tract is unzoned and is 15.55 acres in size. Currently, there are no structures existing on the property. The tract is accessed through a 60-foot-wide private roadway easement that is provided off of Highway 10 West to the south there. The tract is located within the 1998 Urban Comprehensive Plan. This application was reviewed under the current land use designation at the time which was open in resource, which recommends a residential density of one dwelling unit per 40 acres. Just to compare, the recently adopted land use element designates this parcel as a planned neighborhood. The goals of the planned neighborhood land use designation is to preserve development potential that accommodates a substantial portion of future growth until infrastructure is in place or planned. Here's the proposed parcel configuration that was provided in the application. The tracts range in size from 1.8 acres to 5.5 acres, being the largest tract size. The remaining tract, Lot 6, the 5.5 acre parcel, will remain in ownership by Corey Brown himself. The applicant has indicated in the application that the tracts are to be used for residential purposes by the recipients. The proposed family transfer tract does fall within a previously approved 32-lot major subdivision, Canyon View Business Park, which was received preliminary plat approval in 2008. The applicant today was not the developer of this subdivision. Just as a comparison, this slide shows the proposed family transfer tract lot layout shown in red there on the right-hand screen compared to the lots approved with the subdivision. The blue portion of the plat here is Phase 1, which encompasses the family transfer tract. If the family transfer were to be approved today, that portion of the Canyon View Business Park would not be allowed to be filed. The proposal was sent to county agencies for review. We didn't receive any comments of concern. We did receive a comment from Public Works Department that wasn't included in the staff report due to the time that we received the application. They did note that the newly created lots do not show legal access. The remainder lot has a private access easement, but proposed lots 1 to 5 do not, and that they recommend establishing a private access easement to gain legal access to these lots. The rebuttable presumptions and general evasion criteria were reviewed in the staff analysis, and those that were triggered were noted in bold in the report. The rebuttable presumptions that were triggered from the application were if the landowner intends to divide land for the purpose of a sale of a gift or sale to the landowner's spouse and/or minor children. The four of the intended recipients are the landowner's children, who are all minors. If the division appears to be made for the purpose of speculation by the landowner or for resale for the benefit of the landowner by using the grantee as a straw person, this can be indicated if the grantor and/or recipient owns other tracts of land within Missoula County, or it is evident that the receiving family members do not intend to reside on the family transfer tract. The applicant's father and one of the recipients of one of the tracts, Mark Brown, is listed as the owner of two properties in Sealy Lake. Additionally, the applicant, Corey Brown, is listed as the agent for M. Brown Holdings LLC and Brothers Brown LLC, which owns three tracts of land within Missoula Industrial Park area. The next rebuttable presumption was if the parent purports to act as a guardian and/or conservator for a minor child without establishing a trust instrument and the bona fide assurance that the property will be managed on behalf of the child and not the parent. Documentation of the trust has not yet been provided to assure that the property will be managed on behalf of the child and not the parent. Additionally, if the proposed division is on a tract that was previously created through use of a family transfer exemption, mortgage security exemption, or occasional sale exemption, or has received preliminary plat approval. The tract was created through a family transfer exemption in 1992. Additionally, as I mentioned, the tract has received preliminary plat approval in 2008. The general evasion criteria that were triggered with the proposal was if the claimant is in the business of construction or dividing, developing, or selling land. The application did not indicate that the claimant is not in the business of construction or dividing, developing, or selling land. However, the claimant is listed on the MCC HD Certified Public Installer List under the business name of Reveal Excavation. The business website also lists the address of 9480 Inspiration Drive, which is owned by Brothers Brown LLC. Was the, if the original tract was transferred to the claimant within the past two years, the tract was transferred to the claimant in November of 2018. If the property has been subject of a scoping or pre-application meeting for subdivision prior to the application of exemption, as discussed, this tract is part of a 32-lot major subdivision that was originally approved in 2008. The developer requested an amendment to the phasing plan in 2010 with the deadline to file the first phase of the subdivision in December of 2021. The claimant, once again, is not the developer of the subdivision. If the division will result in a pattern of development equivalent to subdivision without local government review, that can be indicated by if the division exemption affects or results in six or more tracts, each less than 160 acres. The division will result in six total tracts that are each less than 160 acres in size. If the requested exemption is unsuitable for the intended use or purpose of the division, staff found that the family transfer exemption is intended to provide a means to allow a gift, a single gift or sale of tracts outside of a platted subdivision to a member of the landowner's immediate family. The request does not appear to be suitable for the purpose of this family transfer exemption due to the nature of the application. If the proposed division is incompatible with the growth policy, as discussed, this will result in six residential lots. The land use designation is open in resource, which is one dwelling unit per 40 acres, which would exceed that density that is recommended. The last general evasion criteria that was triggered would be if the exemption would cause significant impacts relative to subdivision review criteria that would likely lead to the imposition of significant conditions of approval-denial of an equivalent subdivision proposal. This proposal would be brought forward as a major subdivision, and conditions may be imposed relative to the subdivision's impact on public health and safety. As a major subdivision, non-motorized facilities would be required along with additional road standards. Legal and physical access to the lots would be required and reviewed through the subdivision review process. This lot does not have direct access to Highway 10 West and is accessed through that private roadway easement from Highway 10 West. So if brought forward as a subdivision, physical access may be an issue that would need to be addressed. Of course, more information would need to be, would be required in order to determine the impact of other primary subdivision review criteria. Impacts to agricultural and natural environment as well would need to be determined with further information. With that, staff is recommending that the request by Corey Brown to utilize the family transfer exemption to create and transfer five parcels be denied. And I have a few questions for the applicant if he would like to come forward, please. And if you could just state, and if you want to push the button right there, it should turn green, if you wanted to state your name for the record?
Corey Brown.
Did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
No.
Do you or your transferees intend to transfer the property within the next year?
No.
Have you talked to anyone at the county about going through subdivision review?
No.
And I have two different sets of questions here. The first question is for if the recipient is not a minor, so for your father, will the property be developed?
He plans on building a home there, yes.
Will the recipient of the property be residing on the property?
Yes, he will.
And these are three questions for the minors. Do you have a trust established for the children to hold the property?
I do now have a trust written up, but I do have a letter from my attorney, Tim Geisler. Steve Darty does most of my estate planning, but he's on vacation for two weeks. So our other family attorney is Tim Geisler, and I have a letter for the Commissioners and for you if you'd like to review.
Okay, thank you. Who is the trustee of the trust or who controls it?
It will be Corey Brown and Ricky Brown, the parents.
If the property is sold, will the money be held in trust?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Thanks. And would you like to give a presentation or?
Yes, please, if you don't mind. Would you like me to read through that letter from Tim?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, we'll start with the trust. It says, Dear Commissioners, I am an attorney in Missoula and have provided legal services to Corey J. Brown and his related entities. I have discussed with Corey J. Brown concerning the creation of a support and education trust for his minor children, Berkeley Brown, Burke, sorry, Berkeley Brown, should be Tough William Brown, Dylan Fay Brown, and Corbin Dean Brown, which trust will hold certain real property which is anticipated to be transferred to the trust as a result of this family transfer. I write this letter to explain my full expectation that the trust shall be created and funded once the family transfer application has been approved. As you may expect, like many clients, Mr. Brown prefers to avoid the legal expense of creating a trust until he knows the family transfers have been approved. Please accept this letter as representation that support trust for the above-referenced minor children of Corey J. Brown will be created upon approval of Mr. Brown's family transfer application. I urge you to direct any questions regarding this letter directly to me, very truly yours, Geisler Steel, PC, Tim Geisler. And then the other thing I'd like to address is the access. I do not have, and this is again, planning with Territorial Land Works. I have, I do have an easement that I could share with John if you'd like to review. It states that this agreement was made and entered into the 31st day of May, 1998, between Brian Giffen of 9080 Highway 10 West, here and after referred to as Giffen, and Clarence Benson and Margaret Benson, Peel Box 3384, Wickenburg, Arizona, hereafter referred to as Benson. It states that Giffen subdivided Track 1 of Certificate of Survey number 2076 into parcels 1A and 1B. I own the remainder, I think, 1B, and 1A was a five-acre piece that was created on that survey. And Benson is owner of Tract 1B, Parcells 2, 3, and 4 of Certificate of Survey number 2076. Giffen and Benson are desirous of setting forth a 60-foot-wide roadway easement for ingress and egress running north along 791936 West, along Parcel 1A of Certificate of Survey number 4074, and Track 4 of Certificate of Survey number 2076. And for the benefit of Parcel 1B of Certificate of Survey 4074, and Tracks 2 and 3 of Certificate of Survey 2076, it says, Griffin grants to Benson and reserves to himself a 60-foot-wide roadway easement for ingress and egress. So I think that that should clear up any easement issues coming off of Highway 10 into the property. And then, John, would you like to look, or I'm not sure if you would need to look at that or not? Okay, okay.
It can be part of the record.
Okay. And then from then on, again, Territorial Land Works, as soon as I actually received approval of the plat, then I will absolutely establish before final plat easement to those divided parcels. So each parcel will be guaranteed access. I do own, like I said in our pre-hearing meeting, my main occupation is fireworks. It's R. Brown, Inc., a company my grandpa started. My uncle and dad ran it until they passed, and now it's my dad, my brother, and myself are the operators. My dad is the sole owner of that company. I receive probably approximately 80% of my revenue comes from, or income that I make comes from that company on the side. Usually our work hours are 8 to 3, so I started a company called C. Brown, Inc. It does business as Reveal Excavation and Lord of Ammo. So I do sell firearms to family, friends, and some police officers, and that's one business that runs out of 9480. They give me an office, lease-free, or pretty much as cheap as free gets, and that's where I also have a mailing address for Reveal Excavation. My dad is the owner of several parcels of property, the ones here in Missoula that you point out, like Brothers Brown. I think there's four LLCs that have properties. There's two tracts of lands in front of RDO, and there's two or three down Inspiration Drive. Those are all kind of related to our fireworks business that my grandpa had originally purchased on his name. When he passed, it went into the LLCs, and that's why you see Brothers Brown. It was my uncle and my father who owned them together, and then my uncle passed from cancer, and now my dad is the sole owner of those properties. I'm not sure exactly the date he bought the land up in Sealy, but he built a cabin up there, and that's just kind of a, something he goes to on the weekends or whenever he has free time. A piece of property became available next to him. He was concerned about somebody building something that he wouldn't like, so, you know, struck down, it's like, if you don't like, you know, I don't want to hear you complain about it, buy it, you know, you don't want somebody building next to you. So he bought that, so that's why he has two parcels up there. He currently leases an apartment while he's trying to find a place to build here in Missoula. His other two previous homes are less than probably a half a mile from each other at the Y area. All, both of those, or all three of his homes he's ever lived in, he has constructed himself. Same with his cabin, he did his own construction. So he is looking for a parcel, and this is an opportunity for us to be all close together as family. My brother just lives a half-mile down the road. We're all within like that half-mile, mile radius of where we work and have pretty much lived ever since I moved to Missoula when I was probably eight years old, so.
Corey, a question for you. So, just to clarify, does Reveal Excavation do any excavating or?
Yeah, I do, I do, I do some sewer installs. Yes, I'm certified sewer installer. That's kind of where I got my start on the week, like, so after, I worked like 8 to 3 doing my fireworks, and then after that I had some time in the evenings I'd work and do. So now I do mostly residential excavation, so.
Okay, you mentioned firearms and such, I wasn't sure.
Oh, sorry. So yeah, then I have Lord of Ammo, it's just kind of like a little hobby, but I think I sell maybe 10, maybe a dozen at the most firearms a year. Like I said, it's more of just kind of a hobby, something I like, and anyways.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question for Lauren. So have, has CAPS ever been through this before where someone basically pledged to create a trust after the family transfer has happened, or is the more typical pattern to do the trust first?
I can speak, and I do not have a ton of knowledge. John may know maybe of more instances when that's happened. Do you have feedback on that, John?
I don't remember the timeline that our regulations set out, but I know that they, I know that Mr. Brown would not be able to transfer these tracts to his minor children. He would not be able to record the deeds transferring these tracts without also showing the proof of a trust instrument to the clerk and recorder. I think that's the, that's the backstop that we have in place to make sure that these trusts have been set up. But again, I don't remember if our regs require them to be created prior to applying for the family transfer.
Okay, so if I understand you right, John, let's say, Mr. Brown, we approve this, and he does this family transfer, and then he realizes, oh my goodness, I have a tremendous financial need, I'm actually not going to be able to give this property to my kids, I better sell it off in chunks because I have this real pressing need. He would actually not be able to do that because the individual tracts wouldn't be recorded. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
That provides me some assurance. So, so if we did this, you would not actually be able to do anything but sell the thing as an entirety or divvy it up for your kids without going through some other process? Is that correct? Is that correct?
Right, yeah, and I can read you this section in Chapter 8 of the subdivision regulations regarding minors. If land is approved for a family transfer to a minor, as indicated in the approval letter from the county, the claimant must furnish proof that a trust has been set up in the name of the minor children before filing of the family transfer will be permitted, or the deed transferring the property to the minor children complies with the Montana Uniform Transfers to Minors Act. So that is written within the subdivision regulations.
So in a similar vein, how would this work as far as the easement that was referenced, since that's not been perfected yet or finalized yet? Would it be similar to not, not setting up the, hypothetically, if we were to approve this today and the easement along with the trust has not been finalized, would it be in the same category that the deeds could not be filed until the easement was executed? Or does that, do we have any leverage to assure that that happens?
No, we don't have the same leverage in terms of legal access to the tracts that are created through an exemption affidavit, an application. The, you know, Lauren brought that issue up because that, if Mr. Brown had gone through a subdivision review, then that is legal and physical access is something that has to be documented and, and verified prior to filing the final plat. In this case, because it's an, it's an application to be exempt from the subdivision act, we don't have that same obligation to verify legal access. Having said that, though, of course, the practical reality is that Mr. Brown is gonna, has got this easement purporting to provide legal access to a parcel that he owns, whether he get, whether it's divided or not through this process, he's still going to want to have that legal access to his land, and, you know, I, I can't imagine that he won't record that easement and it will provide legal access to the parcel whether or not you approve the exemption application or not. Does that make sense?
Did you get to finish everything you wanted to say before we?
I think so. I thought Lauren filled in on the start of her presentation, some of the things we talked about that were, yeah, so I feel good.
Okay, great. I didn't want to, if we cut you off, I didn't want to.
I was just going to add that, like John said, it's in my best interest to add an easement into those properties. I mean, it'd be foolish not to, but I, I don't know if you can swear an oath and be held to it in here, but that's something I'd be more than happy to do, so. Before final plat, that, that easement, I guarantee, will be on the Certificate of Survey.
So just a question for you, if, as John was outlining, you can't divide this up unless you want to go through subdivision as it is right now because you don't have a trust set up for the kids. So why not go ahead and set the trust up and then make the application rather than do it this way?
I think my understanding, and I think from John and Territorial, they were saying, I understand the process, right? It's get a, like, get the approval from you first, and then you do the work to, it sounds like I still have to get some survey work done to even get the lines and the boundaries, and at that time, that's when all the trust comes into play because I need the, I think the lot descriptions to actually enter that into a trust. So my understanding was hopefully I'd get approval from you, then I go and I get my trust written up with the Certificate of Survey prepared, so all those documents line up and match, and then I can file, is I think my understanding.
And I think your attorney's point was, why would you go through the expense and time of doing that if then the next step was to come here and get denied?
Correct, correct. And then I don't think I'd even be able to properly document the lot description because I wouldn't know what your approval would be, or, you know. Else I'd have to even just go and spend a substantial amount of money to get it surveyed, and then a draftsman or whoever it is in their firm to actually draw it up and give me the legal descriptions and things like that, that then would be put into the trust so that it's, you know, it's documented in that trust properly.
If, I guess we're getting, this could be getting convoluted here, but if I understood it right, even if you went and did the survey work now, none of that could be recorded without a trust?
Correct, yep.
So you gotta do the trust anyway?
After, I think after I get, after you guys give me approval, I have to go get that trust and everything, then I can file the final plat.
Something I haven't seen is the request for a family transfer within something that is a subdivision? Can you explain why, why, I don't even know how to ask a question about that. It's just, it seems strange, this is going to become a subdivision. I don't even know how to ask a question about that. It's just, it seems strange. This is going to become a subdivision anyways, maybe.
Right. So it's a little bizarre in the sense that you think someone going through the expense of subdividing something isn't going to file it. Obviously, the developer has sold both tracks that encompassed the subdivision. I'll go back to that slide there. There's Corey's lot, and then additionally, next to you, I don't believe the developer who originally did that even owns that tract as well. I think he's sold both of them off. So it's.
It's two, this, this is only two tracks right now?
Right, right. So Corey's track, which I kind of roughly outlined there, and then there's a larger track there to the other side that encompassed the entire subdivision. So.
And nothing was ever filed?
No. So the first, that blue portion right there that is part of Corey's tract was the first phase to be filed. And like I said, that deadline was 2021. And with this, if this were to be approved and filed, that is going to supers, you know, he could essentially come back and file those other. Obviously, it would totally break apart the subdivision and wouldn't make a lot of sense for him to come back and file the other phases. But he could do that essentially. But this portion that encompasses the subdivision would not be able to be filed.
How would it be in the public's, sorry, I'll let you respond to, but like, how would it be in the public's interest to do something through an exemption that is going through the more rigorous subdivision process? Or, you know, it went through, to get approved even, and went through a process.
Instead of purchasing and then saying, I'm going to file this subdivision that's already been under my, is that what you're asking, sort of?
Like, to get, to get approved as a subdivision, this went through process. And now we're throwing all of that out the window and saying, actually, we're going to make part of this exempt from all the things that we may have acquired on that. I haven't, I'm not familiar with this subdivision, but I assume there were conditions and things associated with it, that now we're saying, actually, we're just going to make this exempt from subdivision.
Right. And it is interesting, and I don't know of a other instance as of recently where there's been something like this that has basically overlaid a previously approved subdivision. Obviously, Corey, if he wanted to, I guess, could, you know, say, I'm going to now be the developer and file this subdivision. That's our, I mean, he would have the right to do that, you know. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Dave.
Well, I guess, just, yeah, this has been a conundrum for me. So if, if Corey did not go through the family transfer process, application process that we're in right now, would, would he be able to, does he have any legal ability to essentially file the final plat for what was originally approved within the boundaries of his property?
John, do you have feedback on that? I believe that he, he could if he.
So I can't, I can't read the, I can't read the information entirely, but what I think I see is that the blue lots are Phase One, and Mr. Brown has bought part of Phase One. So I'm not sure without first coming back and doing a phasing plan modification. Then perhaps, and I'm no expert, I've never seen anything like this before. If he came back and did a modification of the, of Phase One of that subdivision, and had it include only his property, then maybe he could do the final plat for those lots that are, that he's, that are encompassed within the parcel he purchased.
So I mean, if, if that were a possibility, and, and Corey was amenable to that, and maybe, maybe an amendment could include a lot line adjustment of some sort. That, that would, that would give me a lot more comfort, knowing that what would be approved was subject to a fair amount of public process, unless the lot configuration that you're proposing as part of the family transfer exemption would include the identical road network and whatnot that we're seeing in Phase One. Otherwise, if you're proposing something different than what we're seeing on the right hand of the, the screen, then none of that will have gone through the more rigorous review that's already been done.
I would imagine too that when purchasing this, part of the value of the property was built into the fact that it had been subdivided, and all that process had gone through, and all the engineering, et cetera. And that what you were buying wasn't just 15 acres, but it was one, two, three, four, five, six different lots that could be sold, and that's worth a lot more than just straight up 15 acres.
The, so when the property came available, remember, I was at home, and then it flashed up on Zillow, and I was like, holy cow, I got, there's 15 acres at the Y. We made an offer within, that next evening, the offer was in on that property, and the sole purpose is for residential, is for wanting to build our home there. And when I got back my title report, that's when I had a, there was one of the, one of the lists in the title report at the very end was a book and page for a weed management. I don't know what you'd call it, but something about weed management agreement, and I didn't understand why that would be on this. So that's when I became aware that that subdivision was actually on that property. So we, that's, it kind of, you know what I mean? That's how I found out about it. It was just kind of dumb luck, I guess, if you want to say that I had some of the Phase One of a subdivision. But that's a, that is a commercial subdivision, not, not a residential. So I, I don't have, I really have no interest in commercial at all.
It just, and maybe I'm being too narrow minded, but it seems like bad public policy to exempt part of a subdivision from subdivision, even though it hasn't been filed. It went through a process. I'd like to see the conditions that were attached to the original subdivision and see, because we do have more information on these lots than we generally would have, since it has been subdivided. I'm just, it seems questionable to say, this is in the midst of being subdivided, oh, actually, let's just exempt it from subdivision. I don't know.
I, I hear you, and I'm, I would, what gives me a little bit more comfort is that these lot lines are totally different than the.
So do boundary line relocations.
Can you, can you do?
It hasn't been filed, so he could change the boundary lines, right?
Well, and I guess just to add something else into the mix here, maybe Lauren, you know, so this indeed was a commercial rather than a residential subdivision?
Correct, yes. It was intended to be commercial industrial development when it was subdivided.
How would that differ from the sort of review that would go into if this was proposed as a residential subdivision?
That's a good question, and that would be something, I would look in the conditions to see if it was reviewed separately. And it was reviewed back in 2008, so obviously, the standards have changed a little bit. I'm assuming, you know, lot size, that sort of thing was took into contemplation with being a commercial and industrial subdivision. But as far as I'm aware, unless, John, you have another feedback, that they're not really reviewed, there's not a different set of criteria for commercial and industrial subdivisions.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any particular insight into the, I have it in my head that there's not as, there's not as much perhaps parkland and pedestrian, non-motorized infrastructure requirements in our commercial subdivision regulations versus our residential, but don't quote me on that.
I, I guess just, given the number of uncertainties, I wonder if this is something that we would want to continue beyond today. I would certainly like to hear more about what went on review wise with the subdivision that was previously approved, to what extent the commercial review criteria would differ from residential. And I don't know if Territorial even discussed this with you, Corey, as an option, but it, it seems like there could be some benefits to you by rolling with the original platted subdivision over the family transfer. And it would certainly, I think, from what I'm hearing, maybe give the commission some greater comfort level if, if what you're proposing is based off the original subdivision that went through extensive review versus the family transfer application, which would not.
And I, I can speak to Dave. So Territorial was actually the one who originally did the subdivision with this layout. And unfortunately, Tim's not here, but Tim Worley was the one who originally reviewed the subdivision in 2008. So he really, you know, specific questions on the review process and everything, he really knows the ins and outs of the subdivision. And Territorial, who is representing the client, was the one who originally did the subdivision as well. So they probably have a lot of information as well on the review.
The one, there is one other subdivision that I, I mean, you guys might know more details, but I thought the Alexander subdivision out in Frenchtown was all through its final stages. And then he came back with a, for whatever reason, they didn't actually go forward with development on it, but I believe it already had all the approvals it needed. Then he went and had a family transfer done, and now has got a minor subdivision done all on that same parcel that was done. And I guess, talking with Territorial, it didn't sound like you can convert a commercial to a residential because of the, that was their thought. I mean, they mentioned that, and I was like, I'm not, I'm not interested in a commercial subdivision at all. I just, you know, I just wanted to have houses. But, so I don't, I don't know if that's even possible to convert that.
I guess that, that's a question I would be interested in, to what extent the commercial versus residential use is really the hang up, since ultimately, we're seeing lot lines or subdividing the property into separate lots. I don't know what the, this is totally new ground to me.
And I think, you know, the fact that it would be, did it go, were it to go through subdivision for residential purposes, it would be a major subdivision. It's a lot of lots, and so it's, it's a pretty substantial undertaking. So.
Can I ask a question of Mr. Brown? It's my understanding, based on what Lauren said, that the individual that owns the parcel next to yours, which is the remainder of the subdivision, is not the same person that, that developed the subdivision in the first place? Is that, is that correct?
My, my understanding is, is it Trinsted? I'm trying to think of the name. So one person, somebody came in, bought the 15 acres, and they were the developer, and then they had an agreement with, I believe their last name is Denning's, and they own that little triangular piece to the south of mine. And they own the remain, that, all the land next to mine as well. So I think on the original survey, there was like four tracks. There's one, and then it got split to one A and one B. And then there's actually two and three. And then down below was four. Denning's owned four. And then whoever the developer was, came in, bought 15, got it all approved, and then wrote, they had some kind of agreement, and I don't know if the deed actually transferred or not, but he had agreement, it sounded kind of like an owner financing agreement. Hey, as I develop the land, you know, you get X amount or whatever. It was all, I think, spelled out on a deed or something. So then, where you went bankrupt, I don't know the history there, but for whatever reason, he ended up having to give the land that I own, I think, back to the original person he bought it from, as well as release whatever agreement they had with the Denning's. And then from there, I bought it from that gentleman when he put it back up for sale.
What I was trying to get at is that, I'm, I'm just speculating, but I, I wonder if the original developer's just given up on the subdivision, and that would be some information that would be helpful to us also, I think.
I, I really, in the sense that he's obviously sold them both, I don't really understand why a developer would go through the trouble of selling two parcels that he had subdivided if he wasn't planning on coming. I mean, that just seems a little silly to me.
He must have ran out of money and had to move on.
My understanding is that he had several projects in town, somebody said, and it was, they all kind of went away.
You did say this happened in 2008, right?
Yes, was the original, and then, right, right.
Nobody was buying in resident, any kind of lots then, so.
Right. And then he requested the extension for the phasing plan in 2010, I believe it's, 2010.
So we haven't heard from the developer in nine years. And he's, in the meantime, he sold both, both halves of the, of the subdivision. But, but still, we shouldn't just assume for purposes of this, of this application that the, that there's never going to be a final plat here. That is something maybe we can, you know, ascertain between now and another time that you want to take this up.
And that aside, there are still several other issues with it. And looking at the conditions of the original subdivision, which again, an exempt family transfer makes it exempt from any of this review, but it looks like originally, there may have been some concerns over floodplain and.
Right. And I think that, that concern over floodplain would be to that larger tract that doesn't encompass Corey's tract. I think we're where the main concerns for the floodplain were with O'Keefe Creek running the other side there.
So if Mr. Brown wanted to, he could file the final plat and subdivide accordingly. That's how it is on this map right now.
Not without, not without making some sort of phasing plan amendment. He, because he doesn't own all of Phase One, he would have to go back and go through a process with the planning department, just, you know, to memorialize. And then again, it, it sounds like Mr. Brown's had at least gotten some advice that he doesn't want commercial lots, he wants residential lots, you know, there's, and just, intuitively, yeah, there's probably a difference between the two lots. I can't tell you what the, what the difference is, but there's, you know, if TLI is telling him, you want residential lots for what you're doing, there's probably a difference.
And if he do, and if he does the family transfer and creates a trust, and it all gets filed and done, then this goes away. Is that correct?
That part of the subdivision goes away, and then the rest of the subdivision goes away after the deadline for filing the final plat comes and goes. And when those, when, when, when all those deadlines come and go for the three phases, it's, it's not, it's not even a preliminarily platted subdivision anymore. If they wanted to do a subdivision on the remaining land, they'd have to start from square one.
Given, given that, and the fact that you can't really do anything in terms of giving, cutting this up and giving it to your kids unless you create a trust, that provides me a little bit more level of comfort.
I can't remember the language exactly in, in state law. Is, is the primary purpose stated to be that the family member will reside on the property, or can it be really for estate planning purposes and purposes of having land to sell in the future for children's education and whatnot? Just looking, the children are very young. I mean, what are the odds that all four of these children are going to reside on this property 20 years from now?
Right. So how it reads in MCA, two oh seven one B, a single gift or sale for tracks outside of a platted subdivision to a member of the landowner's immediate family, as defined in 763103, MCA is the landowner's spouse, children by blood, or adoption, or parents. So that's the intent of the, of the family transfer as written in, in the MCA.
So we just add the residing on it as part of our thought process? That's actually not necessarily the intent under state law?
Right, let me.
Well, there is some, I'll be honest with you. I've gone to the ends of the earth to try to figure out the intent of the family transfer. I've, I've read the legislative history of the 1973 subdivision and plating act. There's nothing, there's no guidance on what the legislature meant by the family transfer exemption. The, you know, the conventional wisdom says, things I've read, the old timers say, this, what they think it meant is that when the legislature was considering the subdivision act, primarily agriculture families said, hey, wait a minute. We want to have the opportunity to carve out chunks of land for our kids who are going to stay on the family ranch or the family farm, or for our parents when they retire, and, you know, they want to put a mobile home someplace. Well, we, we want to be able to carve out a piece of land for our kids or our parents in the event that they want to stay on the land and have their own piece of property. And the legislature said, okay. But I have not read that in the legislative history. I haven't talked to a legislator who was in the 1973 legislature. It's just things I've read in, in, in materials here and there. And so really, all we have is, like Lauren said, the language that says you get to do this.
Yeah. I think it also helps, just to reiterate that section that's included on this slide as well, from chapter eight, that the purpose of exemption is not to provide a means of creating, or sorry, uh-
Billing sites.
Yeah. The purpose is not to provide a means of creating billing sites without subdivision review, but rather to accommodate the exceptional circumstances when preliminary subdivision review is unnecessary. The commission has the authority and duty to evaluate and determine from all circumstances whether the proposed division of land is based on intent to evade subdivision review.
That, that language is straight out of a Montana Supreme Court decision, which then went on to say, it's all up to you commissioners. You make the call. And, and that's about as much guidance as, as you've been given.
Thanks.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Yeah. Thanks for nothing. Uh, so is it the pleasure of the commission to do a little bit more research on this and think about it some more, or, um, move forward with it?
I'm okay. I feel like there's enough backstop here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not necessarily inclined to, uh, support this today. I, I would like to know a lot more of the, the history of the subdivision that was, uh, approved previously. I would be interested in knowing what are the real differences between commercial and residential subdivision review. And even though this is unzoned, I, um, I know we have pyramidal zoning now that might, in theory, allow residential use within a commercial area. So, so if it was, uh, adopted as a commercial subdivision, is, does that preclude any residential structures from being developed on the property? I-
That's good answers.
I mean, I, I think that's something I would like to know. And then finally, uh, kind of per the previous slide you had up there, are there, do we have a high level of confidence that there are, there are, um, impacts that would be picked up during major subdivision review that are just going to go completely unaddressed in the current, current scenario? I, I can see, I can envision, and I think we've even seen in some family transfer applications where even though it was a large number of lots, we collectively, maybe not unanimously, but collectively thought that the impacts, uh, were not, would not have been so significant, uh, in a subdivision review to, um, really dissuade us from moving forward with a family transfer.
A hypothetical for you. So let's say this family transfer was to happen. Could Mr. Brown then go ahead next year and build six houses, uh, for these kids who are minors, and then sell the houses and put that money into the trust account? And in so doing, would he have been successful in his evasion of a major subdivision review by basically creating a major subdivision, selling off the pieces, and as a way to generate income for his minor children?
He would be allowed to build structures on them immediately. With the family transfer, you have to hold the parcel for at least two years before it can be sold.
Okay.
Which is, I mean, two years goes by fairly quickly.
But he could basically build a six-unit subdivision and sell it off in 2022?
Correct.
Without having to go through any of the review that he would have to go through if his plan was to do a six-unit subdivision and sell it off in 2022?
Correct. He could even do, especially since it's, it's unzoned, so there's no, you know, zoning regulations, absence density for all those lots. He could do a duplex on each of those lots if he wanted to. So there you have two homes on six lots. That would be a possibility as well.
I have no plan on doing duplexes.
Um, and we did do an analysis last year or so of, maybe it was two or three years ago, looking through the history of family transfers and what happened to those lots after family transfers. And it is relatively common that people do a family transfer and then sell the lot. It, it is oftentimes, for various reasons, right? And again, it doesn't have to be for your family to reside on it, it's a lot. It could be for estate planning, where that is their intent, is to, to sell it and have money to plan for their estate. But, um, it's, it's relatively common. And that's why we, when we last redid the, these regs, we added the two-year holding period-
Right.
-because people were flipping them right around and selling them instantly. Um, so I think it's probably in the applicant's best interest if we continue this, because, um, like Commissioner Strohmeyer, I'm inclined, um, towards denial today, um, because six tracks is, is too many for a family transfer. To me, if you're doing six tracks, you're evading subdivision, um, given the preponderance of evidence that we have in the staff report. But maybe with more information, that'll be different. And there will also be a different commissioner here sitting here next time who might have a different opinion.
While you're here, Mr. Brown, so, uh, Lauren, can you go back to the, the schematic there of the family transfer, um, proposed? Okay, yep. So, uh, to the best of your knowledge, how would you right now see ingress and egress access, uh, to all of these lots?
May, may I go to the screen and point?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you want to, just so you can talk into the mic, do you want to actually want to come up here? And then you can use the mouse.
Okay. So, uh, my access comes right off of Highway 10 here, and then I have 60 feet along this boundary. And then, uh, Territorial had it proposed to bring that access up this direction, um, with, uh, probably some type of cul-de-sac, uh, that each lot can access, or, you know, whether it's off the cul-de-sac or off the street going up, leading to the cul-de-sac, um, the residences could get access.
Okay.
And that would be, that would be drafted up and, and, uh, plotted, or whatever you want to say, recorded on the certificate before it was filed.
Lauren, could you flip to the, uh, to the next slide that shows the old subdivision? Okay. Uh, so Corey, would, would it be completely, and again, this is something maybe you'd want to discuss further with Territorial, and in the spirit of trying to do something as similar to what was originally, um, uh, preliminarily platted, would the sort of access that you see on the right-hand side of the screen work?
That access is owned by the Denning's, and there is an easement for that access. The problem is, the benefit of the access is for, um, Lot Two and Three, which I do not own, the Denning's owned. And so they, when they wrote that easement, it never was for the benefit of my parcel. Um, because we looked at that, because of, I talked with the neighbor that owns One A, and he, he addressed that when we went and walked the property when we bought it. And he said, no, your access is here. So we, we brought that up to the title company and they said, no, that, he, he's correct. There is an access there, but the Denning's own the land that the access is on, and they own the access, or the, the land that the access benefits. It does not benefit me at all. So I would still be forced to, uh, use my, or have to go to negotiate with them.
I guess-
And I think I need MDT approval for, I don't even think there's an approval for that yet.
I, I guess I'm thinking more in terms of the internal access within-
Oh, I see.
-within the property.
Uh, could I, could I run it more like that?
Yeah, yeah, basically.
I think it would, yeah, I was gonna say, it cuts right through the buildable areas and-
No, I, I get, I get that. I, it's just more a hypothetical if, just for the sake of argument, if you could utilize what has already been platted by way of the subdivision. And maybe it would require lot line relocation, uh, of some sort to create the number of parcels that, that you're currently looking at here and reconfigure it somewhat. But if, um, I'm assuming that in the original subdivision review, this general a- access was one of the elements that was reviewed and impacts were, were, um, evaluated. But they would not be whatever you're currently, uh, proposing, Corey. So if, if something like this in theory could work, and if the originally platted subdivision would also, uh, allow for residential use, then, then that might be a way to-
I-
-to get at that.
The one other issue they brought up with doing that is, one of those lots is designated to be a septic system for the, the, like, the entirety of the subdivision. And so on the smaller lots, uh, they, they said I needed to stay around 1.8 acres, um, just to get my setbacks for my septic, uh, systems, because it is a, it's really bad clay soils out there. And so they're going to be, they're going to be large. And I won't, I wouldn't have the setbacks if I tried to do anything under. So there again, um, any concern you have of multi-dwelling units, I don't, I wouldn't even have the setback or the land to make a large system.
So was it a community system that was being proposed?
Yeah, it was some type of, yeah, it was some type of community system in there because they don't, they don't have sewer. So for me, when we, when we went through, um, trying to figure out, you know, like, okay, how could I best put my children's, you know, lots together? It was that the number one concern of, um, Territorial was septic. That was their number one issue, like, concern they had, because they wanted to make sure I had adequate mixing zones. Because now I guess mixing zones have to stay 100% on the parcel, which really limits, which really limits me. So I don't know if that original configuration, if I had to go, maybe the, the few, but those up on the top, I, I don't know if I could even fit. So I'm not sure, I, that-
All the more reason, I guess, to get Territorial back in the conversation here.
So what is your, what is your plan? Like, if this worked, what, what are you going to do?
Sorry, my family transfer, or if I could get-
No, let's say the fam- let's say the family transfer works, you get the lot line configuration you have in the, in what you brought as the proposal, what are you going to do next?
Uh, I'm gonna, I'd be putting in my road access, uh, utilities. Um, my dad, uh, would probably be looking at building at his lot, uh, that he would be transferred. And I'd be looking at building my home on that, uh, remainder piece.
And then how about the other lots? Are you going to build there too?
Um, no, I have no, I don't have an intention of building there. They'll stay in the trust with the kids. But I, I, I would prefer to, um, probably have some type of restriction on there at the sale that it, it stays single family and there's, uh, particular style. I, I don't, I guess I have kind of a vision of what I like to live around, you know, just personally. So I, I definitely don't want a lot sold and then, you know, somebody coming in and throwing a mobile home or something, you know, or whatever it is that I, you know, I'd rather not. I'd kind of like aesthetically to keep it pleasing to the, because I'm living there, so.
So you, so you do imagine then that you would sell those off? And then, even if the money goes back to the kids and the trust?
If I did sell them off, that's where the money would go back to the kids. I don't have an intention to, to sell them. But I'm just saying, at the time they do, I would like to already have that established, that there's going to be some agreements. I would like to. I don't know if that's even possible to do that. I don't know if you can do, uh, covenants, essentially, or some, some type of agreement with, within the trust, that if it's sold, that, you know, they can stick to one house. You know, that's it. I guess that's what I'm, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to throw out as well, if you think about with the zoning update in the land use map being adopted, you could maybe venture to guess that this area in the next one to two years is probably going to be zoned. It's now unzoned. So kind of thinking ahead to what is that going to look like with the next, with the land use that was updated? And I, I spoke with Andrew a lot on this, just because I wanted to make sure I understood that planned neighborhood. And really, when I read the goals, reserving these areas that don't yet have the infrastructure there for a higher density, uh, development out there, but it's kind of reserving these tracks in a sense that once the infrastructure's there, they will be developed at a higher intensity. So really could look at, right now, if you're thinking ahead to that planned neighborhood, this is almost chopping up parcels in a way that's actually a lower density than eventually what we could see in this area. Just as a FYI.
For, I guess for me, I didn't get a lot of say in that, on that zoning. And it probably was a public hearing. I guess I didn't, I wasn't aware of it. But I, I'm the one that pays the property taxes and, you know, and once these are created, I'd still be probably chipping in money to help pay for the property taxes. Obviously, my kids don't earn revenue. Um, and I'd like to think that the way I, you know, my vision for my, my property is, you know, first and foremost, I guess, if you want to say, in a way. Um, so I guess whatever.
So just, it just seems, looking at this and, and listening to you, it, it sounds like the plan here is basically to create a six-unit subdivision. You and your, your, you and your family live in one of the lots, your dad would live in another, you'd, uh, develop the others enough to get infrastructure to them. And either you'd build there and sell them, or just sell them as empty and someone else would build them. That's basically a six-unit subdivision. But you'd be accomplishing that without having to go through the pretty rigorous review that would be required if you were going to just do a straight-up six-unit subdivision.
I think that could be construed on any family transfer in a way. I mean, because I have to, I have to put the infrastructure in any ways to get access to my home. And my father being the far back one, I mean, that's why I'd have to get that infrastructure in there. But like I said, I have no plans on selling my minor children's lots. And that, and those will be in trust anyways.
Talking about possibly selling them and having some design restrictions so that you have a neighborhood you like.
Oh, I just meant like, in the future, whether they sell or whatever, I would like to, I mean, and I said, I don't know if it's possible. I would love to just be able to, you know, like, wouldn't you, just not like control what's going next to you. But I was just hoping to have like some kind of agreement, like, hey, if you're going to go sell this, and then maybe they sell to who knows whoever, right? Because they'll have the ability when they become, um, 18, uh, that hopefully, you know, modular home doesn't come in next door, I guess is, was all my intention was on that comment.
Yeah. And, and that's kind of another shortcoming of using exemptions, is they're, they don't have covenants. They don't, there's no control in the future. Um, and whatever infrastructure is put in, doesn't have to be to any standard. Um, and so the, the risk always is, in the future, if these are not occupied by the family, it essentially is a six lot. There are six houses there, um, with inadequate infrastructure, no stand, you know, just not, not gone through any review of any of the impacts-
Correct.
-or infrastructure requirements that a subdivision would have.
Commissioner Rowley brought up earlier, you guys had looked at recently, kind of the track, you know, how these looked over the years of ones that you had approved. And I can tell you, so an example of one, I think a year ago that was approved, the Kluwswicz family transfer. They do now have, they're on unzoned tracts of land right in Frenchtown, got an approval for a family transfer. And they're still in the children's names, and they did recently get building permits to build there. And they built, uh, four, I think, identical duplexes on those lots. And essentially, for my review, land use-wise, I didn't really have anything to review for, because when it's unzoned, not part of a platted subdivision, we, as reviewers, don't really have anything to review for. So just an example, not saying that that's exact, but just an example of a recent family transfer approval that, and of course, you don't know what's going to happen. I mean, at the hearing, that wasn't contemplated, that duplexes were going to be built. But just as a, for your information.
For, for, I mean, I'm not, uh, I don't know Kluwswicz's, but just for speaking for him, is it, it's, I mean, he's allowed to like create a duplex to create rent for his children, correct? You know what I mean? Like, he actually is giving them a heck of a gift, if that's the case. I mean, if it's intent, if it's kept inside that trust, or I don't know how he set his up, but as, and I don't know what his intentions are, if they were to sell them off or not. But I was just thinking, I was like-
And it is great, because again, a majority of these do get sold off outside of the family. Um, but that's not against the law. And the law doesn't say the family has to live on them. And so it just creates more gray area. But it's something to take into and weigh in our decision of, is that why they're doing this? And is it, is their intent to just create lots to sell off?
And I, and I think I just was getting more at the fact of kind of the review that happens, that versus something that goes through subdivision review. That was kind of my intent of bringing that, bringing that up.
You brought up, it's, it's a concern to you that the houses nearby you are of quality and that infrastructure is sound and that you're living in a nice neighborhood. And I'm just offering up that you apparently would have a greater degree of control if you actually went through subdivision review. And could, could you have covenants? Could you build in, you could build in design standards, you could build in all kinds of things. Whereas going about it this way, you don't have much control.
So do we think continuing it is still, or are you two agree that you would want-
I guess, I guess that would be my first preference, but if you two wanted to, um, deal with it today, I could, I would.
I think, uh, as I said before, I think it sounds like it's in the applicant's best interest if we continue it.
I, I would, I would concur.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go with that too. And I think bringing all this back to the folks at Territorial and talking it through with them and- And I think bringing all this back to the folks at Territorial and talking it through with them and, and then coming back would probably be your, your best bet.
And I, commissioners will look into the approval with this being a commercial and industrial subdivision. And if it was improved under that venue, like if it can be lifted, I'm not sure what the process is with that. So I will do my research on that as well.
Emphasis on getting Territorial back in the mix is trying to convert that to a residential?
Well, that, that's certainly a question of mine and, and learning a little bit more about what level, what sort of review went into the commercial subdivision proposal versus what that would have looked like if had been residential? Is there even a possibility of doing something like what you're talking about residential wise, based on what's already been preliminarily platted? And the other question that comes to mind is if, for all intents and purposes, the, this is probably not the right terminology to use here, but if, if the portion of the subdivision that overlaps with, with Corey's property is kind of vacated or at least superseded by the family transfer, does any of that impact the rest of the preliminary, preliminarily platted subdivision? If this other half was planning on utilizing part of this parcel for a common drain field or something, then that, and maybe the adjoining property owners will never follow through with final plating of it. But clearly what happens on this parcel could impact the adjoining landowner. I'm assuming property, Territorial Land Works is well aware of that. But I'd just like a little more information.
Could you go to the slide that has the, the two pieces of language? Yeah, because I know that we've really relied on this language in the past too, from, from this decision and the fact that the purpose is to accommodate exceptional circumstances when subdivision review is unnecessary. And, and we have heard people with, you know, medical bankruptcies and things like that where they really have an exceptional circumstance that makes us feel more comfortable with this. And in this case, again, and maybe we have more comfort with two lots or three lots or, but, and there's no number. But when you're creating six lots with really no exceptional circumstances, it really would give me pause. And I don't know how you could address that and what you would research to address that. But if there's more, you know, that you could do to prove that you should not have to go through subdivision because you have exceptional circumstances and that makes subdivision review unnecessary in your case. Like I don't feel like that burden has been met.
That's a good, a good catch. I would, I would also suggest when having your chat with Territorial, voice with them your concerns over the quality of your neighborhood in the future. And you may be better off actually going through subdivision review, making a six unit subdivision, giving some of the lots or selling them, or giving them to your kids' trust, however you want. But in so doing, you could exercise more control over where you're living and, and in a better way than doing this.
Yeah, because the unintended consequence here could be that you will get exactly what you don't want to see on the ground without that assurances, that those assurances or conditions that might be available to you by way of full-on subdivision review.
If you were to sell one of these lots after, you know, in your kid's name three years from now, selling it means the person who's going to buy, they can put trailer homes on it, they could put modular homes on it. They could do whatever they want really. But if you go through subdivision review, you can exercise some more control. And I really like what Cola caught here about exceptional circumstances. This really just looks like a six unit subdivision, which isn't a bad thing. And it looks like a way to generate income for your kids, which again, is not a bad thing. But that's not the purpose of a family transfer. That should fit under subdivision review.
Did you have a comment, Lauren?
I was just gonna go back to what you were talking about earlier, Commissioner Rowley, that obviously subdivision is the preferred method of any type of land division. Obviously, these are written in state statutes, so we have to review them. But hoping to use the family transfer exemption sparingly and for those exceptional circumstances. And to Commissioner Slotnick, the sentence before that, that phrase there says, "The likelihood that land development problems will, will occur greatly increases when building sites are created without public review and are further divided without local review." Just for context.
Okay, so it sounds like we should continue this. When is the next, when do you guys want to, how much time do you need to do any research? Or how much time would you like to have to kind of prove up exceptional circumstances?
I am right in the middle of my busy fireworks season.
It can be whenever you like.
I was gonna say, if we could do like.
Third of July, maybe?
Third of July.
Actually, it's easy for me then. The third, I actually kind of get off. I get the product out and hopefully, hopefully they go sell it. Yeah, anytime after the fourth would be, would be much appreciated.
Yeah, how's that look, Emmy?
Yeah, that would give me, that gives me a couple of weeks to definitely do my due diligence and research on the previous subdivision.
July 11th.
July 11th? Okay, sounds good. Then we will continue this hearing till July 11th.
Great, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks. All right, is there any other business to come before the commission? And, and was there any, there's no public in the room for those of you watching on TV, but is there any public comment on this? Okay, and it will continue to be open at the continuance of the hearing as well. If anyone is excited by this and wants to come and make comment at that time. Seeing no other business, we will adjourn. Thanks.